Yep, alright, yeah, it seems to be working. Well, good. It's good to have you all online. Of course, it's good. I know I got the chance to chat with a few of you here. Uh, we're gonna cover some stuff tonight. Um, very open to questions. Um, it's very easy to submit a question whether you're uh, online, or whether you're uh, in person. Just text it to 614-300-5413. Fun fact, that's our church's number. It's uh, not a traditional number. It's a, it's a digital number. Uh, so most of the time it'll go to a voicemail, but you can also text to it, and that goes to Matt, our administrator, who's out greeting other people. So feel free to save that on your phone. In fact, now's a great time because if you come up with a question later, you might not have the number available, but you can text the church or leave a voicemail with the church, and that's one way to get ahold of uh, get ahold of us. So, that's our number. Um, this is what it's gonna look like. Uh, you can also, if you're online, just throw it in the chat. If you've got questions, throw it in there. Alyssa, who's hosting online, will make sure that gets to Matt, and then eventually to me. So, I'm gonna talk for a bit. I'm gonna share a little bit of my heart, and uh, we're gonna open up for question and answer, and then we're gonna take a tour. And if you're watching online, we'll create a little Zoom link we'll share with you, and uh, then I'll uh, I'll join the Zoom on my phone, and we're gonna walk around. And then if you're here, if you wanna see the space, you're welcome to do that as well. We have some drawings and stuff, so. Um, uh, we're doing the best we can, given the circumstances. So, uh, like I said, I'm gonna talk, Q and A, and then tour, and um, you can follow along in that order. With that, I'm going to pray. So, let's pray. God, uh, we coming for you. We just give you thanks for the chance to uh, be together, and uh, uh, we just ask you, Holy Spirit, would be ever-present with us. That we find ourselves in one of those times where we really do need you to work in our midst, to show up, and to inspire and challenge us. We give you thanks for the ways that you continue to work in and through us, that you never leave us or forsake us. In your name, amen. On January 22nd, 2017, so over four years ago, uh, I stood right here, ironically enough, and gave our first talk. Alyssa and I uh, had this dream of planting a church, and I remember standing right here, giving my first talk, casting a vision for a new kind of church uh, that we hope to become. It's true, it was right here at St. Luke's, we had our first launch team meeting. We had a group of a couple dozen people who were meeting to dream about what it could look like. Here is a uh, a photo of that moment, just to prove that it's true. This is from our first launch team meeting, right here in front of this great set of doors that says "storage" on it. And uh, just like there. I've been thinking about that moment uh, a lot today. Being back in this space feels uh, a bit like we've gone full circle, and it's appropriate. Back then, all we had was a vision, uh, and faith in God, and a few people who thought maybe the impossible could be possible if we gave everything we had and trusted God. In a lot of ways, um, you could say this is kind of a launch team meeting. Uh, really, if we're honest. In a lot of ways, we're relaunching uh, church, and we've got a few people who still think God might do something with us, that God might just do something amazing in and through us. So today, I went back and I tracked down that first talk that I gave four years ago. It felt appropriate um, at the moment, and I was reading through what I said at that first launch team meeting. And I gave this little sermon on Exodus, chapter 3. And Exodus, chapter 3, is this great passage, maybe you're familiar with it, where Moses is being called by God. It's the story of the burning bush. Moses stumbles on this burning bush, and God speaks to him and says, "I want you to go deliver my people out of Israel," or "out of Egypt," and "become the people of Israel." And he's like, "I can't do it." So I talked a lot about how God called Moses, how God um, then promised to be with Moses, that God sent Moses, but not just to go by himself, that God would be with him. You know, it's interesting because as a leader, I've been focused on something that I've been trying to work on myself, because I'm not God, just FYI, and uh, so I have very limited capacity. So one of the things I'm trying to work on is, is trying not to micromanage, um, which is a growing edge for many, many people, anyone else who struggle with micromanaging. So I wanted to empower people to do something, and this is something I've been working on where I just like, hey, we, we hired you, we equipped you, we invited you to serve, we invited you to lead, whether paid volunteer, whatever, go and do it. I can't do it. You go do it, and let me know when it's done. I don't need to go along with it. Well, this is a good thing to learn as a leader, because I'm human and I can't do everything. But, but I realized today that that attitude had infiltrated my perspective of God. That I had begun to see God's call on my life, and maybe our church's life by extension, as that kind of thing. That God was saying, "Hey, go do that. Let me know when it's done." I was reading through this old sermon from four years ago, and I talked over and over again about how God doesn't call us to do something that's possible. That, because if it's possible, we just go do it on our own. Like, we wouldn't need God. God calls us because it is impossible. So, so Moses is like, "I can't do this." This is what he tells God. This is a common thing when God calls him. He says, "God, I can't do this," and I love it because God isn't like, "Yes, you can. Believe in yourself." God doesn't say that, interestingly enough. God says, "I will be with you." Which is another way of saying, "You're right, Moses. You can't do it by yourself." "I will be with you." It's the sense that God isn't calling us as a church to go out and do something, figure it out on our own, struggle. No, what God is calling us to do is to do, God isn't, it's not about working for God. It's about working with God. Because God actually wants to be in relationship with us. God wants to actually know us. God, God, one of the ways that we are in relationship with God is when we go out and follow God and take bold steps of faith. God is actually with us, and so I believe that God is calling us to do something that's impossible without God's help. Exodus 14:14 says it like this, "The fight is the Lord's. You need only be still." I wanna share with you where we're headed, but I need you to realize that we can't get there on our own, that the work is, that God is calling us to is impossible without God. And, and I think that's essential to keep in mind. We can't do this on our own. We need God to show up, and that's exactly where God wants us to be, because God wants to be with us that badly. So here's where we're headed. Um, it comes from Micah, chapter 6, verse 8. Micah 6:8, which reads this. I'm doing the slides myself for the first time in forever, because I thought, you know, let's do, let's mix it up, make it more fun. And uh, so, you gotta call me out if I forget to advance them. This is what it says, Micah 6:8. We're familiar with this. "He has told you, O man, what is good; and what does the Lord require of you? But to do justice, and to love kindness, and to walk humbly with your God." A couple of things uh, to keep in mind here. First, what God is asking of us, the things that God is calling us to do as a church, as the people of God, going all the way back to the prophet Micah, is good. You know, what is it, what is good, is the first question. It's a good thing. God is calling us to do good things. God doesn't want to hurt us. God doesn't wanna hurt other people. God is calling us to, to, to something that's really good. But here's the other thing, it's required. Which I always hate when things are required. I'd much rather have things optional. I like them when they're optional. This happens to not be one of those optional things. There's lots of other optional things, but this one isn't. It's required. We have to do it. We will need God to accomplish it, but we can't sit back and not do it. That's not an option. So here's the things we have to do. We've heard this before. They are, do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with God. Walk with God, right? Because we're not gonna do this on our own. We talked about that. So do justice, love kindness, and walk humbly with God. We've, we've used these as a framework to think about where we're headed as a church. So I'm gonna talk about it. First one, do justice. Bernice King, who's the daughter of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., once said, "Social justice is love applied to systems, policies, and cultures." Now, she might not have been the first person who said that, but she's the one that I remember hearing from first. I feel like this is something that's been said in a couple different ways and different places, but I, but, but I happened to heard it from her, and I found her tweeting about it, and I think it's a pretty good definition. "Justice is about doing the hard work of changing systems, policies, and cultures." Love applied to these big ideas. Uh, Desmond Tutu said it like this, "There comes a point where we need to stop just pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in." Right? Justice is more than just acts of compassion. We're gonna talk about that in a second. That's the second one. Love kindness, love compassion, love mercy. We're gonna talk about that. But it, justice is more than that. It's saying, okay, why is there a need for compassion? Why is there a need for homeless shelters? Why is there a need for food pantries? What's going on further up the river that's putting people in this place where we need to then love them as Jesus would love? What's, that's the question that we need to ask. Now, biblically, justice is all about creating a community that is fair and treats everyone equally. It's about justice for the immigrant, and the woman, and the child, and the orphan, and the outsiders. It's about being generous and kind. It's about building a place that looks like the kingdom of God. That's what we are called to do, and it's not optional or up for debate. We are required to do justice. Now, this could mean a lot of different things. And after a year of praying, and wrestling, and reading, and talking with, with many of you, um, uh, I think justice work for us looks like this in the coming year. It can be summed up from a song that Mary offered. Uh, it's not Christmas time, but Mary's still relevant. Mary, the mother of Jesus, a song that she recited when she came to terms with the fact that she would give birth to the Savior of the world, that out of her womb would come the, this king who would set things right, who would establish a new kind of kingdom where justice would flow in the, you know, like, like rivers. Here's what she said. Uh, she says a lot of things in this beautiful little song, but this is the part I wanna focus on. She says in Luke, uh, chapter 1, 52 and 53, almost forgot, "God has brought down rulers from their thrones, but has lifted up the humble. He has filled the hungry with good things, but has sent the rich away empty." In other words, the people we look up to, God lowers, and the people we look down on, and the world tends to step on, God lifts up. This is justice. It is bringing us all to an equal, the, the goal is community. That's that, the very nature of who God is. God is community. God is, that's what we mean when we say God is the Trinity. It's, it's this idea that we are moving towards a kingdom or a community where we can all be in relationship. But when you have some people way up here, and some people way down here, well, you can't be in relationship. There's too much separation. So God brings down some, and He lifts up others. Now, don't miss this. Justice, kind of bringing together fairness, equality, these types of things, isn't about one end of the spectrum. Now Christians, especially American Christians, love to focus on one end of the spectrum. Almost every mission I can think of is focused on one side of the spectrum. You know which side it is. Christians love to do these things. They love to lift up the lowly. And a little bit, I'm gonna be talking about Little Bottoms Free Store. And I'll be honest, talking about compassion ministries like Little Bottoms is easy. People love to hear about the work we're doing at Little Bottoms. They love it. We give diapers to babies. Babies! I mean, what's not to love? Uh, food pantries, homeless shelters, free stores, community development, they're all designed to lift up those who are hurting, and that's good, but that's just one side of Mary's song, just one half. The other half is about bringing low those who are powerful, who are wealthy, who are well-off. Whoo. How many ministries can you think of focused on that side of the work? Welcome to Central City Church. It's what the prophets did, of course. It's why the kings hated them so much. And it's what Jesus did. We know Jesus hung out with the fishermen, and the women of the street, and the sick and the poor, and He lifted them up, and it was, "Ah, it's so beautiful." But He also hung out with the Sadducees, who were the religious elite, and He hung out with the wealthy. He went to their house and ate at their table, and their lives changed because of their encounter with Jesus. Zacchaeus is the perfect example. One meal with Jesus. Here's this guy who's very powerful, very wealthy. One meal with Jesus, and he said he's gonna give back everything that he stole and cheated from people, and, once he's done that, he's gonna then give half of his wealth to the poor. That he's gonna make things right, that's justice, and then he's gonna be generous with the other half that's left, that's generosity. One meal with Jesus, and he is, wealth is cut in more than half, and yet at the same time, we know that his wealth, his true wealth, his value in his spiritual life, you know, grows in ways that can't be counted in gold coins. In other words, God has brought down the rulers from their thrones, but He has lifted up the humble. He has filled the hungry with good things, but has sent the rich away empty. We live in a world that is segregated over these kinds of differences. The poor live here, the wealthy live over here. And our job, the work that God is calling the people of God to, is to change that. But we can't do that by focusing just on one side of the spectrum. We have to come at it from both sides. This separation between the rich and the poor, between the black and the white, Hispanic and the Asian, whatever segregation you wanna look at in society, and the ways that we've separated ourselves, in America, it wasn't by accident. It was done on purpose. We've talked about this. I know many even know this. It was by design because of racist and elitist policies, things like redlining, loan practices, policing, and more. This wasn't by accident. The, the ways in which individuals segregate themselves, and then the ways in which that plays out in communities and neighborhoods and it's not by accident. And now, we live in a world where there are places in Columbus where black people won't drive through after 4:00 PM because they're afraid they're gonna get pulled over. That's just reality. That's truth. I have a friend who's black and lives in a predominantly white neighborhood. He has a teenage boy who he worries for, as we see in the news. He has a reason to, it seems. So to be proactive, he's made a point to introduce his son to every police officer in that community. I want you to imagine that if you're, what would it look like for your plan raising a child included introducing them to every police officer? So that, you know, you know, when they're riding their bike home after dark, and they get pulled over, the police officer will know them, and that'll just... I have a friend who was pulled over, happens to be black, is pulled over in front of his house, in his driveway, actually, and went on to be cuffed for doing nothing more than driving while black. The need for racial justice, in particular, justice in general, but racial justice is real. And that's one reason why we're focusing on this in our season of a church, racial justice. And this, this is important. Here's why. So we're right here at St. Luke's, just, just outside of Grandview Heights, and if you look at Grandview, uh, Grandview's just a placeholder for wherever, many of us live, in various communities. You could, you could, you could put in um, a variety of other communities. But uh, Grandview happens to be where we're standing, and where we're looking to open back up. So if you look at Grandview on a list of communities in Columbus, and rank it for diversity, it's gonna be pretty low on the list. We know this. If you look at suburban school districts, um, there's a lot of schools in this area, from Grandview, UA, Bexley, and you could look at the list. There's, this is available online. They're gonna be pretty low on the list when it comes to diversity. So naturally, I've gotten this question. It's a hard question. I've wrestled with it quite a bit. Someone has, uh, more than one person has asked me this. "Joe, if we want to be more diverse, why stay in Grandview?" Hmm, that is a, that's a good question. I mean, I'm, that's a good question. It makes you think. Here's my answer. I don't know if it's the right answer, but here's my answer, and for now, you're stuck with me. Our work isn't diversity. Because diversity isn't something you do. Diversity is the fruit of justice. Diversity isn't an action. It's a fruit. It's a byproduct. So we have to ask ourselves, what is God calling us to do? What is the action? And diversity isn't an act. You can't do diversity. I don't, what does that even mean? No, we do justice. That's what Micah 6:8, "Do justice." We don't do diversity, and that's what we're about. That's what we're gonna focus on, racial justice. Now, think about it in the terms of church planning. There's different strategies for church planning. Some plant churches where there are a lot of Christians, you know, because there's a market for it. That's why there's a lot more church plants in the South. Don't know if you know that, but that's the reality. The Bible Belt, it's a great market. There's always a need for another church with better doctrine and better music, and you can launch it, and it'll do well. That's one method. Not a fan of that method, but that's a method. Another way to think about planning churches is to go where there's a need. Plan a church where you can serve people who aren't being served. I think the same is true for racial justice. You know, we could plant a church in a more diverse neighborhood, and by nature of that, be more diverse. But in what way have we changed anything? In what way have we changed anything? Other than benefiting from diversity that's already there? I think that God is calling us to change the world, and to change our little corner of the world, and your little corner of the world, wherever it is. And I guarantee you, whether your community is diverse, places like Westerville, really, or whether it's majority white, even to the point of 90%, I guarantee you there's work to be done. Wherever you're a neighbor, there's so much work to be done. For example, Pickerington, Pickerington School District's uh, like, one of the more diverse school districts in the Columbus area. It's great. Well, not if you go ask the Black Parents Network of Pickerington. They wouldn't say it's 100% great. There's actually a lot of really deep challenges. So wherever you are, there's challenges, and I think we have to, 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 to see these, not as just challenges, but as opportunities. That's why we've contracted a diversity coach, and have leaders of our church going through an MEIQ. We have this great group. It's made up of board members, staff, stakeholders, just people in our church. We've got about a dozen people, um, walking through an 18-month process that's gonna involve all, like, the whole church at some point, but right now, we're kind of in a core group, walking through what it means to become more multi-ethnic, to understand diversity at a deep level, not as a show, but like, what is it, what is this, what's really going on? What's white privilege about? What does it mean to be white? And that's what we, that's what we studied this last month, but we're gonna be getting into a lot of things. That's why we helped to launch a community organization right here in Grandview. That's why we're, really, that's one of the reasons why we're working with Love Boldly, is that we ask the question, "What does it mean to really love our neighbor?" So to do this, um, we need to raise $11,000 to do justice. And really, that's just the beginning. That's just, we're in the learning phase. I have no idea what I'm doing when it comes to this area of life. I just don't. And uh, and, and, and I find that um, white people who feel pretty confident they know what they're doing, they're even worse off than me, right? So I think I'm in a pretty good place. That's what my coach says anyways. If I can admit that I don't know what I'm doing, that's where I start. You know, I had a chance to talk with a leader in Grandview who supports the work we're doing around diversity inclusion. This is a very significant stakeholder in Grandview. I was on a call because we're, we're working on some initiatives together. And I mentioned that, I was like, "I can't work on anything right now. I gotta focus on this town hall meeting right now. I gotta focus on this thing that's happening." And she said, "Oh, what's about?" And I told her some of the things we were doing, and how, part of it's gonna be raising money. And uh, she said, "Well, okay, well, how, how can you give? I wanna give." I was like, "What? This person doesn't go to our church. I don't know that she has any plans to go to our church." I said, she's like, "Yeah, yeah, you all give, 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 and I wanna give back in return." You know, that's the work that's being done, and it's getting noticed, and it's not easy, and it's not gonna change things overnight, but God is using us to make a difference, and our, our job right now is to keep planting seeds. So, I wanna move on. That's uh, Micah 6:8, "Do justice." The second one is "love kindness." So justice is about doing that hard work um, of changing systems, and honestly, um, uh, sometimes when you're doing that work, you're not even seen as very kind. I don't know if you know that, but people who do justice work, like all of the prophets, they're not billed as being particularly kind people. It's just hard work, and sometimes you have to challenge systems, and usually you're viewed as a troublemaker. And Jesus was viewed as a troublemaker, and He was but we are still called to be kind. So justice is about doing the hard, uh, going to the hard places and working to change systems. Kindness is about going to the hard places and just loving the people who are there. And they're different, right? Justice is about going to those hard places and trying to change the systems, and kindness is about going to those hard places and just loving people who are there. And it's not either or, it's both. And that's what we're trying to do at Little Bottoms Free Store. So I wanna tell you about Little Bottoms Free Store using three numbers. The first one is this. I'll do this very quickly. First one is $10,000. The average cost of a new baby, the first year of somebody having an infant, is somewhere between $10,000 to $20,000. That's what it costs. You can do the math. It's pretty reasonable. It's not uncommon to spend up to $1,000 on diapers that first year. Some of you who, you know, if you're thinking about having a child, this is good information to have. $1,000 that first year, $2,000 on formula if you don't breastfeed, $2,000 on basic, you know, furniture, crib, monitor, stroller, car seat, throwing baby clothes, which is so ridiculously expensive. And yeah, and you can get to $10,000 pretty quickly. That's the low end of the average. Some people spend up to $50,000 on their children, if they have it, that first year, based on various averages. So that's the first number. It's hard to have a baby and spend less than $10,000. You can, you can do it closer to $8,000, but, but it's a little tricky. That's the first number. Here's the second one. 70% of the members that we have at Little Bottoms Free Store have a household income of less than $20,000 a year. That's just reality. I know that might be shocking to some people, others, not at all. But 70% of the people who come through Little Bottoms Free Store live on less than $20,000 a year. So you can imagine how if you had to spend half your income on a new child, how that would impact the child, because you probably aren't gonna spend that much. How it'd impact your housing, how it'd produce problems with your quality of life and food, et cetera. The first number, $10,000, that's, that's the average cost in a year. The second number, 70% of our families make less than 20%. The third number is this. Since launching Little Bottoms Free Store, we've given away 30,000 diapers to over 1,000 individual children. 30,000 diapers. And this matters uh, for a reason. There was this recent study by Yale, done in cooperation with the National Diaper Bank Network, because that's a thing. Uh, the National Diaper Bank Network, and they, they did a survey, and it said that moms ranked diaper need as more stressful than food insecurity. And, and that makes sense partly because there's a lot of great places where you can get food, uh, from food pantries to, you know, there's a lot of organizations meeting food insecurity, but there's this unmet need when it comes to diapers. And so, and, and this is what's even great. This year, because of people's generosity, all over the, the Columbus area, including many people in our church, we have doubled the amount of diapers that we give away each week. Um, and so in two years from now, we expect this number to more than double. And this, it doesn't even mention all of the articles of closing that we've given away, hundreds of high chairs and strollers, and loads of, loads of just stuff, all to people who need it. So this year, we wanna expand what we're doing. This is a good thing. This is what God has called us to do, to be kind, to love people right where they are, and just try to meet a need, and to build a relationship with them, which is such an important part of, of Little Bottoms Free Store. And so to do that, we wanna update uh, the building that Little Bottoms is housed in. We, we wanna put in some new flooring and new shelving. We wanna bring on a part-time director to partner with the volunteers who are already doing a great job, and we want to then work with that director to uh, move into its own nonprofit status, which opens up Little Bottoms to a world of, of funds that are currently not available because it's under our church's nonprofit, and that's just kind of how that works. To do that, to take Little Bottoms to the next level, we need to raise $53,000. And that'll cover a part-time salary for a year, which will give us plenty of time to work up to that budget, and uh, update the building, et cetera. So that's that. The last one is "walk humbly with God." Walk humbly with God. And I gotta be honest with you, when I talk about walking humbly with God, we're talking about what it means for us as a community to, to spend time with God together. To gather and worship, um, to gather, uh, for small groups, to gather, um, in a, a community with one another. And uh, to be in relationship with another. It's talking about worship, small groups, and city kids. So I wanted to just give you a brief history real quick, uh, about what that has looked like for our church. So you're probably gonna wanna make this full, full screen, Ryan. But here's a, here's a map of Columbus, and uh, um, uh, zoom in here. This is kind of uh, the area where we started, and, and uh, when we uh, first met as a church, we met, as I said already, right here, right in this very spot. We gathered a launch team. We met here a couple of times. After a couple of launch team meetings, we actually ended up moving, um, down the street to Fifth Avenue, and uh, to Trinity UMC, another church down the street, Marble Cliff. We set up offices there, so we get, we were able to get some offices. If you can see this picture, that's Alyssa and little baby Finn. He was just a, he would have been, uh, just a, um, not even one yet, I don't think. And uh, uh, we had an office there. Some of you have been there. Uh, we were able to do some launch team meetings there as well. Well, right around the same time, uh, we uh, had a heart for the Franklinton area, and we ended up having access to a building. And we said, "Well, let's see if we can do something there." So, um, some of you might remember this, some of you might not, but we actually started in Franklinton at a little place called The Avondale Place. It was an old Avondale United Methodist Church. And uh, we, they just handed the keys over to us, and we, we're gonna try to make something of it. So in the context of The Avondale Place, we started dreaming about Little Bottoms Free Store. In fact, the first couple meetings of the team that helped launch Little Bottoms happened right in this building. We also did some baptisms right outside, uh, some members of our community, including Grant, right there in the green shirt. Some of you know Grant. And Angela, baptized right there outside of Avondale. We met, we planned Little Bottoms, and then this uh, new opportunity opened up that I'll get to in a second. Well, while this is happening, we decided to launch worship services at, back in Grandview, at the theater. And uh, some of you have been at the theater. You remember that? Uh, our children's space was right next to the bar. That was our claim to fame, and not a great idea. But uh, we did it, and uh, we knew very, very early in the process that we needed to do something different than the Grandview Theater. Well, while we were figuring that out, an opportunity opened up down the street from The Avondale Place, so going back to Franklinton. Yes, this is confusing. It was confusing when we lived it. It's still confusing. We ended up launching Little Bottoms out of West Park Church. The church was still operational, and it was in much better shape, and they were totally willing to uh, allow us to use space. That's where we are today at Little Bottoms Free Store, as well as where most of our churches are. So in February 2018, we kinda moved in there, and at December that year, we launched Little Bottoms Free Store. Well, back in Grandview, we uh, moved down the street again, because we knew the theater wasn't gonna work. We moved into a smaller worship space that had better children's space. Can you believe that? Families uh, who were watching, uh, Backspace was better children's space than the theater. Uh, of course, within a year of being at Backspace, we realized that this is not good enough. Uh, of course, within a year of being at Backspace, we realized that this is not good enough, children's space. Um, and, uh, over the whole life of our church, uh, our children's space has really, uh, suffered. And, uh, um, uh, but we were at Backspace and a lot of really great things happened at Backspace. A lot of people got to meet each other, community. It really was the first time where I felt like we were a community. The theater didn't allow that, but the Backspace allowed us to do a lot of cool things, like gather afterwards and hang out and have a meal. And to, you know, one Christmas we had pancakes and just a lot of cool things. It was a good place, a lot of really great memories. The, the owners there became good friends with me and Alyssa. It was a really great experience. But then 2020 happened. over the last year and a half, here's where we gathered. I want to cry just looking at it. Whew. We started, of course, in CA Backspace. Five different places in a year and a half. Five different places we've gathered for worship in a year and a half. I'm exhausted thinking about it. We started live streaming out of CA Backspace. Um, and then we did last fall, uh, you remember, just had a great experience Outdoor Chapel. Um, uh, many of you were a part of that, um, really great. And, um, and then we had to move back inside for a live stream. We went to West Park Church, we were able to set up the sanctuary there at West Park. Um, and then over, uh, Easter Lent, we did a couple of things here. We did a little prayer service in the sanctuary and we did an outdoor service for sunrise service at St. Luke's Church. And right now we're, uh, hanging out at Camp Mary Orton. Now, I do want to say that if you're watching or you're here and you have been to all of these locations, I will give you a prize. Because I'm trying to think of somebody who's been to all of them and there's not very many who, you know, Denise, you've been, you went to Avondale. Yeah. So Denise might get a prize. I think there's a few other people who's been to all of them. But there's a lot, it's a lot of different places. Absolutely insane, not terribly unusual for a church plant, but obviously exhausting and COVID doesn't happen. So as we think about opening up, that's where we're getting at. As we think about opening up, of course, um, outdoor spaces, uh, don't make sense for us. I mean, they're great. In fact, we want to do some outdoor stuff. I'd love to be at the Outdoor Chapel again someday, um, when, when it becomes available, if, if it does on a Sunday morning. Um, well, I think we'll probably go to Camp Mary Orton again. So if you haven't gone out, we're still there until June 20th. I encourage you to come because next summer we'll probably, you know, uh, I'm not going to promise. Like I don't want to plan that far ahead, promise you. But, but it would be great to have like, you know, some outdoor services next summer regardless of COVID. It's just a fun thing to do, but obviously not where we can land. Um, we already knew that CA Backspace was not a good place for us. I mean, it was a great place for a season, but we just need better children's space. So we kind of ended up, uh, kind of wrestling between St. Luke's and West Park. So we'll talk a little bit about West Park. We get some questions about West Park, but why not stay at West Park, et cetera? Um, this is something I've wrestled with, something our board has wrestled with quite a bit. Um, there's a number of variables. One of the things being that I feel still like we are called to this area of Columbus and that is meaningful to some people and maybe not meaningful to others, but that's still something that I feel called towards. But on a practical level, which is very useful because it could be meaningful to all of us if it's practical, is, uh, West Park is an old building, a hundred years old. Um, there are a number of challenges at West Park. Now, our relationship with West Park is going to increase. Our church is going to be rent, is going to be moving into a rental relationship with West Park. I can explain all this more if you're interested in how this works. And, and once we become chartered, we'll actually own West Park. Um, so that'll, um, that's the plan anyways. Doesn't mean that's what's going to happen, but we'll actually own this, this building and we can use that in a variety of different ways. But there are a number of challenges there that aren't going to be fixed very quickly or very easily. The entire basement needs to be remodeled and sealed so that stops leaking water. We've got mold issues related to that. Uh, it doesn't have AC in half of the building and there's a variety of other challenges. So what we're doing is we're getting some assessments done. We have a company that's going to come in, going to tell us what it takes for it to be made. But here's what you need to know. The, the, the process of really making West Park what it could be is an extreme, nothing compared to what we're talking about right now, uh, in regards to like raising money. I mean, it's, it's going to be a, I don't know, have a number for you, but I do know that like the first guy that came in talked to me like I wasn't going to be able to afford it. So I, you know, like it's one of those kind of quotes. And it's been a month and they haven't sent it to me. So it's, he's like, I'm still working on it. I was like, well, if it takes a month to work on it, I imagine it's, you know, it's, you know. So these are the type of, there's some real challenges. So I'm not trying to scare anyone. I'm just saying like, we are going to continue to move forward, but even if we had all the money in the world, it, it wouldn't be ready in the fall. Like we, we want to be very intentional and strategic and we want to keep moving forward. So regardless of different feelings around West Park, um, it's something we're going to continue to invest in. Our current plan is that we have the space that is usable. We can use it for Little Bottoms Free Store. It works well for that as well as our offices. It allows, uh, most of our staff and volunteers to have their own space. So most likely moving forward, it's going to be those purposes. And then we're going to continue to do an assessment. But that means it really makes sense for us to open up at St. Luke's. And, uh, so I want to share a little bit of what that's going to look like. Uh, really the selling point at St. Luke's is the children's space. So I know if you don't have kids, you know what? I, it, I think it's still important, um, because you're probably friends with somebody who has kids. So it's, it's a big deal. And quite frankly, we've had some cool worship spaces and not so cool children's spaces. Um, we've been able to worship in so many cool places. And I'm not saying the worship space here isn't cool. It's cool in its own way, but, uh, there's not been great children's space. And that is something that I was very committed to this time around. I'm looking for a location where we could have amazing kid's space. Um, not just for my kid, not in any sort of selfish way, but because that's something that we haven't had and I'd like to see it happen. So, um, we've got some rooms here. I'm going to breeze through these very quickly. This is an old kitchen that we're going to be turning into a kid's classroom. And this is just a mood board, but you can kind of see, uh, this is the kind of stuff that it's going to be. We're talking paint, new floor and furniture, very reasonable, nothing crazy. Um, we'll show this in person too, or online if you want to see. This is with the nursery, uh, it's an old parlor, uh, blue carpet. It's going to go, blue wall is going to go. So new flooring, new paint and, uh, and then, you know, these types of things. This is, uh, was put together by a team, including a, a designer that we worked with. And then downstairs is this large group room that's going to be kind of our, our comfortable space. And we're going to use this, the kids will be able to gather here on Sundays. It'll be kind of a large gathering area, but we'll be able to use it throughout the week as well. And, uh, there'll be a little corner where there's some couch and a footstool. And, uh, small groups will be able to, to use this and, you know, the meetings, team meetings, things like that, as well as kids. It'll all be kid-friendly and kids will be able to run around and do all of that. So in order to do that, as well as invest in our small groups, which is a part of what we want to do, uh, uh, with this, um, we're going to need about $66,000. So all in all, we're looking at a need of $130,000, which is, you know, not as much as it could be, uh, but, uh, it's a pretty, pretty big chunk. But here's the great thing, friends, um, uh, people in our church, um, from the, from the very beginning, uh, our parent church, our, our denomination, and then members of our community have been so generous and we've been so frugal. We've been able to save. And so between our savings that we are committing to this project, some grants that we're applying for, as well as some stuff that we've just budgeted for, we actually have 80,000 of it covered. So not too bad. Uh, that actually will allow us to do almost all the essentials. Like we, we could potentially do enough. Um, not everything we want to do, but we could, we could, we could, we could chuck, we could knock a quite a bit out of this, um, just with what we have or what we hope to have. Um, our goal though is to try to do all of it. And, uh, so our goal is to raise $50,000, which is really pretty doable. And I want to say that, very hesitant with our finance team and our board about raising money in the midst of a pandemic. I just wanted to say that. Um, and we wrestled with it, we talked about it. And so I, I've said this more than once, I'm going to say it again. Um, this will be the, the, the softest sale you ever get. Um, this is, we wanted to put this out there because we know people love to give. And we know people want the opportunity to give. And there might be some part of this that they could get really excited about and want to be a part of it. And I personally am excited to give towards it. Um, there are many in our community who haven't been, uh, who haven't been impacted real negatively financially over the pandemic. So we're putting it out there because we know there's people who want to give. My invitation is for you to pray about it, but, but it, there's, it's, this is not do or die. This is just an opportunity and I really want you to hear that. I will say that we, some people have, uh, we've had a, a couple of meetings, of course, with board and staff and other people. We've been talking about this for a while. I've mentioned it upfront. And so we've had some people make some early pledges. We currently have pledged, um, uh, out of that 50,000, we have $10,000 and $10,200 pledged. So actually, uh, our goal is just to raise the remaining, uh, 39,800. So, which is pretty doable. So all I want to say is, um, this is where we're headed. Um, and, uh, this is what we hope to accomplish. I'm going to put this up and Ryan, if you want to put that kind of, uh, um, do the split screen, leave it up there while I, while I talk, I want, I want to share one last thing. I want to finish by sharing, uh, 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 the last words I had at that first vision talk four years ago. I was reading this as I, as I mentioned, and, um, I've been thinking a lot about how we launched and how that's basically what we're doing again, you know, we're, we, we, it's hard to even know who's a part of our community anymore. So much has happened, so much is people, it's just been an interesting year. And so if you're here, then you're here on purpose and not by mistake. And together I think God can do some really cool things through us. Um, and so I want to leave you with this. It's my closing after that sermon written on Exodus 3, the call of Moses and how God called Moses, equipped Moses and promised to never leave Moses. Here's what I said then, and I feel it is just as relevant today. There's going to be a lot of work that goes into launching a church. And it would be easy to see each other as people who are working for the sake of working, but I don't want that. I want to remember that whenever God sends us on a mission, that God is there with us, that going on a mission is more than just doing things for God, but rather doing things with God. That the act of serving and working and planning is actually a really simple and profound way to spend time with God. Here's what I'm trying to say. My prayer for you is this. If you choose to join this crazy, strange new adventure of relaunching a new church, if you feel God pulling on your heart or calling you by name as Moses did, if you sense a need for a new community where, where everyone will be safe, safe for all people to learn more about this kind of life that God wants for us, my prayer is that this season will not be only, will not only be used to make a real difference in this community and in the world, but that it will make a difference in your life as well. That, that you'll look back on this year and this season and you'll say, well, that was a season I got to spend time with God. If only because God was asking me to do something that was impossible to do without God. So I had to. Let's pray. God be coming for you and we give you thanks and we give you thanks for your prophet Micah and for all the prophets and troublemakers. We give you thanks for the people who love those wherever they find themselves, who are generous and kind. Give you thanks for allowing us to be a community together, walking together after you. Help us to be your church in this new phase and in this new life. In your name we pray. Amen. Well, friends, um, open to questions. Uh, we'll spend a couple of minutes on this and I'm not the only one who has to talk. We have a mic that you don't have to hold. Um, and so we've got, uh, some staff here in, in-house as well as our, our chair of our board. So, um, I'm hoping that I don't have to be the only one to talk, but, um, you can text any questions to that number if you want. If you're in the room, you can ask it just out loud, um, and I'll repeat it into the mic. But, um, Matt, do we got any questions? All right, let's hear it.
Um, so you mentioned, uh, you mentioned that West Park needed a lot of work. Um, can you go a little bit more in-depth on that? And you said that you don't have a number. Um, can you give like a ballpark if possible?
Yeah, West Park's a, West Park's a hard one. Um, you know, we know that the basement needs redone. It floods when it rains really hard and then it, it leaks water whenever it rains. So we're talking different downspouts. We're talking construction that takes the downspouts, downspouts and puts them into the city sewer. We're talking removing all the drywall around the foundation, uh, putting a, a plastic seal on it and drainage and then installing four sub pumps. So I don't have a ticket for that. Um, but that's just what the basement doctor, uh, who we had come out and talk. On top of that, um, we, you know, th- this gets into stuff that I don't understand. This could be like stressful some, for some people, but, um, even to know what needs to be done is actually an expensive endeavor. Like when you bring an architect into a building and you have to pay them a lot of money to even just tell you what it's going to cost to get things done. So our denomination is committed to spending, I think, close to, I won't say a number because I'm not sure, but, but a significant amount of thousands of dollars to bring in a professional company to do an assessment. That has not happened yet. Um, so we don't know, but we as a board, and I don't want to speak for the board, but if, as we've kind of like know that this assessment is happening and we're feeling out the building and we just know that West Park is something that we want to wait and see and figure out how we can use most strategically, once we know more information. Um, so the work that we are going to put into West Park are things that we're going to use, um, immediately and, uh, that we need in order to continue using the way that we're, we're currently using it. But adding additional uses to the building is something we're going to wait until we figure out long-term use. The, I'll add that our relationship with St. Luke's will be a rental relationship. And, uh, the benefit of that is we're not responsible for any of the grounds or upkeep. And so we're not taking on another building to worry about at this point. Um, we, the, the building that we're using for worship and discipleship and children's, we'll be able to fix up and we'll have a lease, uh, agreement that allows us, a very reasonable one. Uh, very affordable compared to, um, yeah, compared to the, the area. So. Any other questions?
Uh, we got two similar ones, so kind of, uh, combine them. But, um, do we have like a contract with St. Luke's or do we have access to St. Luke's for a set amount of time, for long-term? Um, what's kind of the timeline for St. Luke's?
Yeah. So kind of wrestled with the time, there'll be, yeah, there'll be an agreement with St. Luke's. Um, um, and that's being finalized. I think we're looking at a commitment of three years. Um, uh, so we'll definitely have it for the next three years. And, you know, I, I really think that, um, given different variables, five years would make more sense. But, um, uh, we will have access to it in partnership with them. So the rooms that we're updating will be our rooms and, um, will be the ones that grant other people permission to use them. So like that big room and the nursery, these, these are going to be our space. But we'll be sharing this fellowship hall area, we'll be sharing the sanctuary with St. Luke's. And so we'll work around the schedule. But generally speaking, it'll be available if it's available. So it'll be available anytime. So, and it, and I'll add that it'll be a similar cost to what we were paying at Backspace. So Backspace, which we had on Sunday morning for a couple of hours, uh, same price. We're going to have an entire building that we can use throughout the week, um, that we can use for a variety of different purposes. Um, I'll add that St. Luke's, it's not a normal rental agreement. It, it a hundred percent will be a rental agreement, but you have to also understand that the pastor and I are, are colleagues, that we belong to the same denomination, um, that our, our conference is supportive of us sharing space with St. Luke's. And so there's like a bigger umbrella that's involved in this as well. So there's a number of checks and balances that we're really pretty, um, we'll have a lot of use of the building in collaboration with St. Luke's. And, um, as far as our investment, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be comfortable. Like we'll be, it, it's worth it. We're not going to, like, we've got a number of checks and balances that'll make sure we're, we're okay. If that makes sense. Going to be, I don't know who's watching online, so I gotta not say the wrong thing. Yeah. What else?
Um, another, uh, St. Luke's is a lot smaller than West Park. So is there a plan or anything if and when we fill that space, this space up?
Yeah, I know St. Luke's is, is smaller. I mean, West Park Sanctuary is, is giant. And, uh, with COVID, that's a great benefit because you can really socially distance. And many of you have kind of worshipped in there. Um, when it comes to growing a church, it's actually not great because if you have worship in there and there's only been 20 people, it's like, kind of, it's not the experience you look for in church. it's not the experience you look for in church. So West Park is very large, but that's not necessarily what we need because we aren't large yet. St. Luke's is still bigger than Backspace. The children's space is, the children's space is literally larger than our worship area at Backspace. And the worship area is larger. We would max out at about 70 people in Backspace and that was of course crammed in, shoulders touching. St. Luke's should be able to fit closer to 120. With COVID, of course, and us being just even past COVID, probably wanting more personal space, it'll be less than that. But yeah, we've, me and actually the pastor here at St. Luke's, like we recognize that, I don't know how big our community is, to be honest with you. I mean, we might be worshiping 50 people instead of 80, which is what we were pre-pandemic. We just don't know. I mean, COVID just created so many questions. There's a chance though, that within the first six months, we could be pretty full at St. Luke's. Well, then we just have to ask the question of additional services. Or most likely though, our, our goal really isn't to move to a bigger place, you know? Like we want to put down roots. So instead of like moving and just keep moving to bigger places, we'd rather explore ideas around having, you know, what would it look like to have a worship service at West Park, you know, in a couple of years? Or what would it look like to have a worship service somewhere else? Maybe in an area of, of the city that's, that's closer to people. We have a lot of people who drive way up north. What would it look like to find some space there? Those are future conversations, but once we kind of move into St. Luke's, my hope is that we'd be able to kind of put down roots and, and really be comfortable here. And then kind of figure it out from there. So. Good question.
Follow up to some of the first St. Luke's questions, but is there a plan to combine worship with St. Luke's current congregation? Like has happened a couple of times in the past or staying separate or anything along those lines?
Yeah, so the plan would be separate. It's an interesting relationship. We're, we're 100% going to be kind of in a rental, have an official relationship with St. Luke's. But we are friends with St. Luke's and I'm friends with the pastor and I've become friends with people in the community. So we will be doing things together. And, and I would be amiss to tell you that there, there wouldn't be conversations down the road about doing more things together. Like that's something that is on people's radars, but that's not what we're committing to right now. What we are right now is we would have a worship service and they would have a worship service, both would be on Sunday morning. Most likely, we're still working out the details, but yeah, we'd have a worship service. They would have a worship service. St. Luke's is, is a small congregation with a big heart. Their big thing is adults with disabilities. And they have a ministry and a class for that. So I mean, half of their worship service is adults with disabilities. And so whatever we did down the road or whatever St. Luke's future would be, that's something that I'm personally committed to making sure we continue to support. In fact, we've put in our agreement to support that ministry. We just think it's a really great, a great thing. I've been able to worship here a few times, preach a few times and they just, this, that class, that community brings so much life to worship in ways that, you know, I mean, you all are boring compared to them. They're just really great. You know, prayer requests being brought up during the sermon. I'm not giving you ideas, but you know, like there's some really cool stuff. So right now we'd be separate services, but yeah, we'd probably do things together. I know that that's something that, and we, we would work towards leveraging kingdom resources to accomplish ministry. It's a great question. Maybe one or two more. Be sensitive of the time.
So with, with sharing space, does that present any limitations? Especially thinking about families with small children or time constraints, stuff like that?
Limitations? Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think there's, there's unique challenges to sharing a space or renting a space in existing congregation. I think that's, that's inevitable. I mean, the reality is, is finding a, a space like this, especially in this area, is very, very difficult, especially in the condition that it's in. So the, it's not like there's a lot of great options. Ju- just for context, I mean, if we wanted to rent a space in Grandview, just the Grandview conversation, which is a whole nother conversation. In the Grandview area, a space that was just the size of this room is going to be twice what we're going to, you know, like it, it's just significantly expensive. So the other side of that is, yeah, there could be some unique challenges, but I don't think there's going to be too many time restrictions. I think we will have to, with two services on Sunday, we will, I mean, I'm going to have to keep my sermons reasonable. That's probably the biggest challenge, but otherwise. There's not like, we're going to have to get out of the building at a certain time. You know, there'll be places downstairs and in classrooms and up here where people can hang out and there can be crossover. And hopefully there's just mutual relationships that are being built that are good. So I'm not sure. I mean, yes, there'll be more limitations than if we owned a building like this where we could do whatever we wanted. But yeah, it's, there's also a lot of opportunities that come with that as well. I don't know if I answered that well.
Just kind of off that, is there an idea of when worship would be?
Yeah, well, you know, the, the plan right now is we would probably be closer to like a 9:30 time slot. That's the, the, the idea that we're looking at. And then St. Luke's would be at 11 o'clock. So that's the current, but none of that is set in stone. And that's just something that we're talking about. Some people don't like early mornings, I know, so. We normally do 10. It's not a big deal. We've done a 9:30 before. It's, you know, there's, there's no ideal situations, but yeah. Other?
That's all I've got right now.
That's all you got? Any questions from you all? Cool. Yeah. Sorry, I looked at the chat. It was funny. Someone with kids was like, 9:30 is not early. I was like, yeah, we've, we've been up for a while at that point. Yeah, it could be, it can be a challenge. Yeah, I will say just around some of these conversations, we're really kind of entering, you have to understand that we've been in conversation with St. Luke's for years at this point. Like we, we, we've been in this space and, and it's had a number of different twists and turns. But in the last year, I've been able to develop, and I know other people in our community even have as well, relationships. Some of our staff and relationships and friendships with, with leaders and, and people in the community. And we're absolutely starting from a place of, of having an official, you know, rental relationship and sharing the space. But there really is opportunity to, to, to be a, a community. And that's not, that's, like I said, that's not what we're signing up for, but I would lie, I'd be lying to you if that wasn't part of the hope, you know, that there, that it doesn't have to be an us and them. That's not, if you didn't hear, if you haven't been listening then, if you, if you think that would be the goal of having an us and them mentality, you know what I mean? Like then you weren't paying attention to everything else I said. Like our hope would be that we could build relationships and that, that we'd be able to do more together. That this could be a place where the kingdom of God can be expanded and it allows us to have a great location on, on, quite frankly, a very busy street and a, and a very dense, growing area. I mean, not to get into church metric stuff, but I mean, it's a great location for a church. There's an outdoor playground. There's great space for children's space. The sanctuary's got technology that's usable really quickly. There's some updates we want to do in the campaign, but there's, we, it's very usable. There's some really good stuff. And it's a great starting point. Now from there, you know, I don't know. I don't know where we head. I don't know, know what God's got for us next. But I think there's some really, and I said this in a short video. I don't know if you all watched it, but I think after the year we've had, we need a place where we can kind of relax and let down and be a community and kind of heal and recover. And, and I, I do think that, that this will be a place for that. I think that's what the people of St. Luke's want, want for us. They know that we've bounced around dozen different places, you know, they want that for us and I know, I want that for us as well. And I think this is a, a place where that can happen. So those are my thoughts. I want to say that, does, I, I, I did all the talking, which I knew was going to happen, but that's fine. Any, any other, I'm looking at staff. Anyone else want to say anything? You don't have to. Denise, you have to come up here and talk. Because there's people online. You don't have to. I'm just, I made the op, op, I threw it out there, so. Well, then you shouldn't have volunteered.
There's a mic right here. So just kind of talk in this general direction. No, it's right here, but just talk in that general direction.
I just wanted to share with everybody that, you know, like we look at, at the building of West Park and we think, oh, there's a building. It's a huge church. It's got lots of rooms that, you know, we could use. But in reality, we can't use any space really, except for the sanctuary and the fellowship hall and one room that we have for children. The rest of it is not up to code for people to be in the building like that. We're at code right now for what we're doing in it. So there would be a lot of things beyond just fixing the basement that we would have to do to be able to be in that building. Plus Little Bottoms is using a lot of the space.
That's, Denise would know as the, she, she runs Little Bottoms right now and so, yeah, thank you for that. Anyone else want to, I don't feel, you know, I just don't want to, yeah, yeah. Then we'll jump to the tour real soon, for those who want to go on it.
Am I, am I in the right spot?
Yeah, yeah, just talk in that general direction.
Do I need to like look in the camera or anything? Oh, cool, cool. So I can go back there and now I'm beyond cameras, what you're saying? Okay. Cool. So I just think, you know, I, I had said it a few of the other meetings and, you know, I think, and for those of y'all that who don't know me or who don't realize my position, I'm Stephen. And I'm the chair on the board, which basically means I, I, I try to keep myself organized enough to keep the schedule organized, but I don't do a great job of it. So every now and then I try to say something that sounds a little wise. But anyway, one of the privileges I, I do get is I get an opportunity to kind of see a, a little bit of the process. And everybody's kind of heart for it. And you know, I think when we get up here and we talk, a lot of times we get kind of like the clean expression of it and the, 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 the product, if you will. And just, you know, wanting to kind of testify to the, to the heart Joe has for this. I think to the excitement St. Luke's has and the excitement of the board. You know, this last year has been one that's taught us flexibility, has taught us patience that I wish I'd never had had to learn. But you know, I, I think that really it gave us a unique opportunity to really reflect on what is Central City? And how do we, how do we relaunch, if you will, coming out of this? And it's been a, a really humbling thing to see. And so I think just kind of to, to share with y'all, the witnessing of what amazing people we have. Not just in our group, but even in talking with the St. Luke's folks, in working with Robert, with the MEQ, IQ. And then a lot of the other people that we're just working together with, like the, the heart of the net. And I think the ingredients to do something really incredible, coming out of a year that's been really taxing and challenging. So I think not only do we have the opportunity to, to really do things that will strengthen the kingdom of God, but really in a way that also helps our community heal. And I'm personally just really excited for a chance to kind of come back together in this space. And once again, recognizing I have young kids. But it just, it does my heart real good to think about having our kids together again and having that children's space. And you know, just to kind of, just say how exciting this is. And I think that how much work has been put into it. And I think it's going to be a really amazing season for our community and our church. And you know, I think it's, it's a really cool thing to be a part of.
I'll, I'll throw out one more thing, just, you know, in the spirit of the questions and I appreciate your comments, Stephen. You know, West Park aside, because it's, it's a, as Denise said, there's, there's things that we're working on there. When it comes to gathering a space, I would, I would be lying if I said that this space is the type of space I would design if I was designing a church. Okay. So that's not, that's not the case, right? If we were to start from scratch. I mean, it's, it's a building that's been added on to you. There's a lot of entrances. It's kind of a maze sometimes. It's not terrible, but it's like, there's some really cool things about it, but it's not, it's not perfect. But here's what you have to understand. There's a church that's launching in this area. My wife just texted me, but I can't get my face recognition to read. Yeah, text Matt babe, and then he'll. What, what I'll say is, just, just real quick, there's a church that's launching in this area and they're going to rent, they're going to lease some space or they bought it. But if they're leasing it, I can tell you what the, what the price is based on the square footage. They're, they're going to spend for a worship area, really great worship area that, that'll seat like 200 people or whatever. I mean, it's going to be 130,000 a year that they're going to spend, spend on a building, right? So that, that's, that's what we're going to raise to do everything that we want to do, right? So is this place like the coolest place in the world? That's exactly what we'd ever want in a church? No, not really. But that's not, it's good. It's got great things about it. It's going to be a great place to worship. It's going to be a great place for our kids. It's going to be a great place to have a community dinner. It's going to be fine. And it's going to enable us to save an immense amount of money to put into the things that we care about. You know, making a difference in the community, making a difference amongst the poor, making a difference amongst the rich and making a difference in the world. And, and that is essential to us. I mean, we're able to, by, by paying a little bit of money here and, and honestly, basically getting West Park for free, we're able to do so much with so little, just by being very strategic. Is West Park the perfect place for Little Bottoms? No. Denise gets her steps in. I mean, there's a thousand stairs she has to walk up and down. I mean, we want a building with a loading dock for Little Bottoms. So there's, you know, nothing's perfect, but we, we make what we, we have work. And I think that's, that's what this is going to be. So, yeah.
Don't forget to mention the pledge card.
The pledge card? Yeah, I think I, that's a good question. I think I took it out. So anyways, you can pledge. Thank you. And if you go to centralcity.co/mica68, Mica68, centralcity.co/mica68, you can see a bunch of stuff on there. It has a PDF that you can download. It has of, of, of all of the details and the, then the price points. It has a video that kind of just a shorter video. It has some images. It has a place where you can give and has a place where you can pledge. We were going to talk about this over the next couple of weeks. I, I promise I'm not going to beat our heads over. We're well on our way to being able to do quite a bit, but we do want to make sure that we're communicating this as effectively as we can. So that if God is, is challenging to give, I'll just, I'm just going to be honest with you. I think there's people here and who are online and who are going to listen to the podcast who God wants you to give. And it's not about anything that I said today. It's about the transformation that happens when you give. And maybe you haven't given to Central City ever. Maybe you give very generously. But giving is a good thing. And I'm not saying that in a condemning sort of way. Like it's just, I promise you, it's just a good thing. And there's really cool things that happen when you do it. And so I do know that God is going to, so we are going to talk about it, but we're not going to make a big deal about it. But we want to make sure that you know what's going on, not only for the giving part, but because, you know, we want to have this conversation. We want to be transparent. Because we're looking at a new phase and there's a, it's going to impact us in a lot of ways. But I think it's, I think it's the best way forward, what, what we've got. Let's do the tour and take a second to get people on Zoom if they want to. So if you want, if you're online and you want to see the space, we will talk about it a little bit. I'm going to try to put Zoom on my phone and the rest of you, you're welcome to just wander. Cause Molly and Claire are going to be downstairs. They were on the team that kind of helped design the space. So if you're specifically interested in the children's spaces and the community space that we're creating, we got the mood boards down there. And they'll be able to share a little bit about the process if that's helpful or answer questions. So we'll do that. And if you want to do that online, just jump on the Zoom call that I think Alyssa's going to put in the chat, if that makes sense. And yeah, we'll go from there. So. Yeah, yeah, I think so.